I call the special call meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order that was called for today, July 30th, 2019. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Battle, Mr. Clark, Mr. Glover, Mrs. Lucas Burke, Mr. Moody, Ms. Simmons, Miro.
Here.
As part of the city's due diligence, as we were working through the last session of the General Assembly 2019, through the city attorney's office, the city retained the services of economic consultants so that we would be really knowledgeable about casinos and their viability in Portsmouth. And today, we'll receive the report from the consultants that have been working with our city attorney and city manager. And this information will feed into the study that is being done by the Joint Legislative Audit Review Commission. The General Assembly enacted casino legislation that allows for casinos in five localities in Virginia: Portsmouth, Norfolk, Danville, Bristol, and Richmond. Part of the legislation included a requirement that J-LARQ conduct a study on best practices of casinos in other states, so that the General Assembly would have knowledge of what works best throughout the country, as it considers the casino legislation again in 2020. Part of the legislation that was adopted again by the General Assembly in 2019 was a reenactment clause. That means that, just like council will often consider ordinance on two readings, the General Assembly will have its second reading on this legislation during its January 2020 session. And so the information that J-LARQ, the J-LARQ report, will feed into the General Assembly's deliberation. So with that, I'm going to ask the city manager to introduce the consulting team.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. This morning, we have present our nationally-recognized gaming economist, Dr. Alan Meister, and Mr. John Repper, who will provide a market study briefing on the potential for the development of a casino gaming establishment to anchor an entertainment district in the Victory Crossing area here in Portsmouth. Dr. Meister is CEO and principal economist for Meister Economic Consulting. And Mr. Repper is the president of Hospitality and Gaming Solutions. Both gentlemen are from Southern California. Dr. Meister.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Patton. Thank you all for having us here today. So what I want to do is give you a little background on us first, and just kind of give you a little bit of our experience. As Dr. Patton said, my name's Alan Meister. I'm the CEO and principal economist with Meister Economic Consulting. I've been doing research and analysis of the gaming industry for about 20 years now. I've researched and analyzed all different types of casino gaming: commercial casinos, racetrack casinos, tribal casinos. And I've done work for all different types of entities, including local governments, state governments. I've done some work for the federal government on the Indian gaming side, as well as actual operators of casinos themselves. And in terms of some of my experience, the project I was mentioning, I did some work for the federal government, looking at regulations and trying to look at how they impact the industry and how the industry impacts the surrounding communities. So that was something that was done several years back. It was a very important project on the regulatory side. I also do an annual Indian gaming study. I've been doing it for about 16 years now. And I look at the size and magnitude of the industry, how it impacts other segments, and how tribal gaming affects the other types of gaming that exist, and as well, the surrounding communities. That study has been used in a lot of places, including with the Supreme Court, the World Trade Organization, various states, and the other governments that use the study for a lot of different purposes. With that, I'll pass to John, let him give you a little background on himself.
Good morning. My name is John Repper. I'm the president of Hospitality and Gaming Solutions. I've been the president of my firm for about 10 years. And prior to that, I led the national practice for KPMG nationally in the hospitality and gaming industries. I've done over 1,000 studies as it relates to casinos and hotels throughout the U.S., as well as parts of Europe and Asia. One of the unique things is I have been on the side of states where they first legalized gaming. And I have taken Iowa through the process, Missouri, Louisiana, Maryland, and New York, to name a few of the states. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it back to Alan.
All right. So just to kind of review a little bit, just kind of the scope of the project as to what we were asked to do, we were posed with a few different questions. One, what is the potential for the Hampton Roads gaming market? And is it feasible to have two casinos in Norfolk and Portsmouth, since those were both proposed in the legislation? Secondly, we looked at, assuming that it is feasible to have a casino in Portsmouth, what type of recommendations would we have for that sort of facility, in terms of scope and amenities? And then lastly, we provided some financial projections for what that facility would be able to do in this market, under the given assumptions of where we are today. So the scope of the study then takes several different steps to get to those questions. So we start off with a site analysis, which in this case is an extremely important piece of the puzzle, given the locations and the different cities that are being considered. Then we also are looking at an area review, looking at demographics and data about the area, to give you an idea of what the potential can be for the casinos. We also looked at other gaming markets in the surrounding states, mainly look at the degree of competition that already exists, and how that plays in. Then with all that information, we put that together and be able to look at, do a gaming market analysis specifically for this market and for a Portsmouth casino. And then with that, as I mentioned before, we were going to give recommendations, at this point where we are, what the programming could potentially be for that facility. And then that build off that with a financial analysis, and look at what type of revenues and costs and net operating income, profit, that could be generated by that type of a casino. And then what I'm going to do is, we're going to talk about each of these items, and at the end, we'll have a couple other strategic issues that we've thought about and raised for the city to be able to consider as it goes down this process. So we'll start with the site analysis, and there's four things, or three major things, and then with some other considerations. But a couple of things that are really important is the access to the site for a casino, looking at visibility with other site factors, and then looking at the relationship to other area amenities. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to let John give some data and information on each of these items.
The Portsmouth site is Victory Village, which is over 50 acres. And I have to say it, of the named sites so far for the five cities, by far the best site. The access is great from 264. And because of the size of the site, it really enables whoever your selected developer winds up to be, with a lot of flexibility. It will be visible from 264. And one of the things that you would have to do is widen the lanes at exit three from two to four lanes. It's an easy site to develop, because it is relatively flat, and there is a barrier from any of the current residential development in that area. Another great advantage of this site is it's right near the golf course. And in that immediate area, there is a limited amount of retail, as well as food and beverage. And the closest hotel actually is the Renaissance in downtown. One of the built-in things that's great is Tidewater Community College is right adjacent to the site, and that will help with the hospitality workforce for the casino itself. A couple other site considerations, this site is totally owned by and controlled by the city right now, which would make the development go a lot easier than those other sites where, you know, you're dealing with private entities and trying to, you know, put together a site of any substance. And the city would benefit from the real estate taxes that would be generated long-term by the site.
Okay. So but the next step that we talked about in the scope of the study was the area review. So here, what we did is, we collected data for the city of Portsmouth, as well as the surrounding areas, especially the MSA, for which the people would be coming from to come to the casino. So we gathered data on population, various types of income data, employment and labor force data, as well as data on tourism, and also looking especially at transportation.
This is the population forecast for the MSA, which includes Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Portsmouth, Newport News, not only in 2020, but all the way through 2024, as well as what the forecast is for growth in the overall state of Virginia. This is a breakout of the income levels for both the MSA and the Commonwealth. And these, both population and income are obviously two of the factors that go in in sizing what the potential of a gaming market is going to be. The top five employers in the city of Portsmouth, which are all very stable. It's an area that's heavily reliant on government, military, manufacturing, and professional services. Unemployment, these are the most current stats year-to-date. As you can see, Portsmouth is a little bit above that of Norfolk, as well as the MSA and the state and the nation. One of the impetuses of the casino will be spurring economic development. And the jobs created by the casino will help Portsmouth be more on par with the rest of the surrounding cities, as well as the state. Tourism is important. And in case you didn't know, Virginia, for lovers, is the second-most popular tourism slogan in the country, only next to "I heart New York," and has really received a lot of accolades, and has been around now for 40 years, and has proved to really get some traction. This was a survey done on visitors to the region, and why they come to the region, and what their purpose of the trip was. And this really just shows the activities that they do while they're here. And after a casino, hopefully, that will be among those things. In terms of visitation within the MSA, Portsmouth is about 12%, which really lags behind a lot of the other cities. Again, another reason for the casino that would help in terms of overall visitation to Portsmouth and overall economic development. In terms of some of the infrastructure, Norfolk International is the largest airport near the area, and it's supplemented by Newport News International. Newport News is actually kind of going down in terms of traffic, mainly due to the low-cost providers that have gone into Richmond as an alternative. But Norfolk International continues to have very healthy growth. And actually, only five miles away from Victory Village is the Hampton Roads Executive Airport, which primarily does charters, which could help on the casino side as well, in terms of bringing people in. The tunnel project and the bridge on 64, which would increase from four lanes to eight lanes, is anticipated right now to be completed in 2025, which would definitely help in terms of access and overall congestion in the area.
Okay. With that, we're going to shift to the next step of the scope of the study, which is the gaming markets in the nearby states. So we looked at four different states: Maryland, West Virginia, Delaware, and North Carolina, starting with Maryland being the most relevant. There are a total of six, so let's go to the next. We got here, six different gaming facilities. They started in 2010. Their total VLTs are over 11,000. The total table games is almost 600 table games among the six facilities. The total gaming revenue for those six properties is 1.7, almost $1.75 billion in 2018. And in terms of performance, we do a sort of a measure of how well does, how much revenue do they generate per machine or per table? And for the machines, the win per day, so win per unit per day, was $274. And for the table games, it was $3,600. These numbers are fairly high, and especially in comparison, I'll show you on a couple of the other slides that kind of give you an idea. And interestingly enough, for both the MGM and the Maryland Live properties, garnered the lion's share of the market. It's 73% of that market share is just for those two properties alone. All right. So then we go to West Virginia. West Virginia has five gaming properties. Four of them are racetrack casinos. We often call those "racinos" for short. And there's one land-based facility, which is the Greenbrier. Total gaming revenue for these five facilities is $606 million in 2018. And they have, now have the introduction of sports betting as well in West Virginia. When we first started looking at all the states, we naturally looked at the set that I mentioned, including West Virginia. However, these facilities are in excess of four hours and almost 250-plus miles away. So these, as we started to go through and actually do the analysis, these facilities did not have very much of an impact on the analysis itself. And that's fairly true for the rest of the properties as well, but I'll just kind of give you some more of the flavor. So with Delaware, VLTs, that's the gaming machines, started in 1995. And then the table games followed later in 2010. There are three gaming facilities, and the total number of VLTs is 6,240. The table games is 117. And their win per unit per day on the VLTs is 155. That's much less than the 247 that I noted in Maryland. And then the table games are a little over 1,500, which is less than half of what it was in Maryland. Again, just kind of trying to show you the difference of how Maryland's performance is. Total gaming revenue is $419 million in fiscal year 2018. And then the last state I mentioned was North Carolina. In North Carolina, there are two tribal gaming properties, both operated by Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians. Their first facility was built in 1997 in Cherokee. And then they later added, most recently in 2015, they added another property in Murphy. In total, those two facilities, and the first one is much larger than the second, but they have over 5,000 slot machines. And then they added later, and that was only a few years back, that they added the table games as well, and they have 170 of the table games now. They also have significant hotel component, which is over 1,400 hotel rooms. But they're also currently doing a 700-room expansion to that facility, so additional development that they're doing to generate more business and to handle the business that they're getting. Okay. So with that background, so now we've got the sites that we've looked at, and we know where the facility is proposed for. Then we went and we looked at the data, the demographics, the information that tells you where the people are coming from, where they would come from, what kind of potential is there. And then in the last slides, I was showing you the competition, and how, what kind of competition new facilities would face. So putting that all together, I'm going to let John walk you through a little bit of the gaming market analysis on a high level, as to how we get to the conclusions that we're doing for the study.
As you can see, those are the proposed locations for the five cities. And at the time, New Kent was still in, but that no longer looks like an option. I want to talk a little bit about how you define the gaming market potential. And what we specifically did was define what that market would be for the Hampton Roads MSA. And then more specifically in that MSA, what would be the potential for Portsmouth. That's just a map illustrating all the major cities within the Hampton Roads area. And this is, these are kind of going through the overall assumptions that we used in building up the model. Obviously, I mentioned the different cities where the casinos would be in. Specifically, in this analysis, we assumed the Victory Village site, and also, in terms of Norfolk, it's a 20-acre site near the waterfront. And the first year of operation, conservatively, would be 2024. All the things that we talked about before, in terms of population, the competitive venues, these are all different things that go into the analysis, as well as how often people go to a casino during the course of a year, and how much they spend. To do this, we use a gravity model, which has literally thousands of inputs in it. It has median income by zip code, as well as population, for the whole market area. And then other assumptions are also built in about the quality level of the cities, the casinos rather, as well as what the travel distance is, as well as really what the drive time is. Because as we know, distance and drive time don't always equate. So that's incorporated within there. Overall, the potential of the Hampton Roads MSA is $550 million. In terms of how that breaks out, in terms of the supply, that would be 4,000 gaming devices and 125 table games, in terms of an optimal mix. And those are the performance metrics. You saw some of the ones that Alan went through before. That's just really equating to what gaming devices would do on a daily basis, and the same thing for table games. The, one of our principal charges in this assignment was, are two casinos feasible in this market, given the proximity of Norfolk and Portsmouth? And they are. This market can definitely support it. Right now, it's really a question of, how will this be divvied up? And we know what the location is going to be in Portsmouth. And it's a site that is 50-plus acres, easy to develop, easily accessible. And right now, based on the time of the analysis, our assumption was that it would be a smaller site in Norfolk of roughly 20 acres.
So for the programming, we set out a few different elements that we wanted to cover and provide some guidance on, as to what is possible, given the information that we've talked about, and the size of the market. So we looked at casino square footage, the size of the casino itself, but also especially the number of devices and tables that would be able to go into and fit into that property. Parking, which is a very important component for visitors. The number and type of food and beverage outlets, the amenity of a hotel, which can be also a very important part of a gaming facility to draw and keep customers. Also, meeting space, an entertainment venue is another aspect. And then we looked at some other components, and then the financial implications of that.
I wanted to talk a little bit specifically on what the results equate to, and what they mean for Portsmouth. The overall casino itself would be roughly 180,000 square feet, which is, allows for a lot of circulation, and so it's not cramped. And plus, the gaming industry, like everything else, is evolving. And what the gaming floor looks like today is going to look totally different in about 15 years from now. And so if you go in with open eyes, this is something that you can easily adapt to the changing times. With those two locations in mind, this is how we divvied up the gaming devices, as well as the tables. With Portsmouth having a larger site, 2,400 gaming devices and 75 table games, whereas the smaller site in Norfolk had 1,600 devices and 50 table games. We took a look at what food and beverage outlets you need to support a casino of that size, which includes a buffet, which is a favorite of most casinos, and an Asian or a Latin outlet, a sports bar and grill, which depending upon the outcome of the legislation on sportsbook, may be an option on where you would want to integrate a sportsbook. An upscale steakhouse, as well as a food hall or a food court with four different venues, as well as a coffee and sweet shop that's more or less a freestanding kiosk kind of thing. And then, there is going to be a hotel, which is on the next slide, but it also would have, obviously, capability for banquets, as well as hotel room service. In the market right now, there are only five full-service hotels that are of three-and-a-half-star quality or above, four of which are in Norfolk, and one is in Portsmouth. And this just kind of gives you the idea of how much meeting space and the size that each of them has. From a performance standpoint, collectively, the market's been pretty stagnant right now, which is actually a good sign, because the Hilton in Norfolk opened up last year and was readily absorbed into the market, as you can see by the occupancy and rate percentages. One thing that always deters and presses down rate in this MSA is the fact that there is so much government business, and there's per diem rates that create downward pressure on rates. So it's harder for a lot of hotels to make it. So it's harder for a lot of hotels to make it. What we would envision for a hotel at this particular development would be 300 rooms, a quality level of three-and-a-half to four stars, and approximately 20,000 to 25,000 square feet of meeting space. Further down the road, the casino is going to be the anchor of an entertainment district. And right now, the entertainment venues are in Norfolk, and the performance of Chrysler Hall, as well as the Norva, is shown there. As the casino garners loyalty and builds up, logical things would be an entertainment venue, or perhaps maybe even additional hotel rooms.
So next, we're going to the financial analysis. We're getting towards the finality here with some of the end numbers. And we're gonna, we quantified them on a couple of different levels. We looked at your revenue levels. Okay, so when we're talking about revenue, we're not talking about profit, we're talking about the amount of money that comes in. But then we're looking at not just gaming, but we also measured the non-gaming side as well, within the facility. Then we looked at expenses, so what it takes to operate the facility and to get to a bottom-line number of the net operating income.
A couple of things, just on the financial analysis side. And these are really more key terms on the legislature, which sometimes get a little bit mixed up, is the difference between gross revenue and net revenue. Gross revenue does not take out promotional allowances, and promotional allowances are free play from the casino, different types of, different promotions that are actually subtracted out from that gross number. And then there's the net number, which is net of all that. And that would be an important thing in terms of how the legislation is ultimately written by the state. We believe that Portsmouth site is a superior site, and things are not etched in stone. And obviously, Norfolk could come up with a different site than what they have right now. But the way things were at the time of our analysis, their site was 20 acres, ours was 50. And so the split was a 60-40. And in the first year of operation, gaming revenue is approximately $330 million, of which 280 would come from slots, and 50 million would come from table games. The ancillary revenue, which is food and beverage, other miscellaneous revenue, the hotel, it all collectively ranges from around $52 to $60 million for the first year of operation. And total revenue for the casino is approximately $382 million to $415 million for the first five years of operation.
And that's per year?
Talked a little bit about what promotional allowances were, and right now, they're aggressively put in at 11%, and that was done for a reason. Most of the states, everything adjacent, in fact, to Virginia already has gaming. You're going to need to build a base of players, and that's the right amount of money to aggressively pursue building up a database. In terms of expenses, the casino expenses are about 18, or I'm sorry, 19% throughout the projection period. And the ancillary expenses tend to be more in the initial years, and then as the property stabilizes, they go down a bit. For instance, on food and beverage, the cost is 106% in the first year, largely due to a buffet, which never makes money. And as operations stabilize, you're able to better control expenses, so that expense level of 98% is reflective of what food and beverage expenses would be in the third year of operation. All the expenses together total approximately $112 million in the first year, all the way to $120 million in the fifth year of operation. There's a bunch of other things that can't, you know, be directly categorized, which are administrative and general expenses, energy costs, property ops and maintenance, which is, you know, the maintenance of the property itself, as well as marketing. And those expenses total 19% throughout the projection period for the five-year period. And then there are fixed expenses, which include insurance, real estate taxes, which the city would benefit from, and that's $3.4 million in the first year of operation. And we also factored in a capital reserve, which starts out at 3% and grows to 5% in the third year, and then stays there. And so for the first five years of operation, that's $88 million, which seems like a lot, but the cost of a slot machine is roughly $22,000 by the time you load all the bells and whistles. And the life expectancy of a slot machine is really only three to five years. So that money's, that, and I'm only talking about the slot machines, not the maintenance of the rest of the property that you need to keep looking fresh for. So here are the numbers in terms of overall total revenue, which we talked about before, and net operating income, which ranges from 100, almost 145 million to almost 152 million in the fifth year. It's important, though, to point out a couple of things. This doesn't include debt service, and it doesn't include the taxes from the bill from the state of Virginia. Initial thoughts right now were 14% in the first year, and then stabilizing at 15% thereafter, if your revenues were $200 million or more. And those deductions are not reflected in that number, as well as any revenue sharing that might be done with the city of Portsmouth. Couple other strategic issues. Obviously, there's gonna need to be some infrastructure improvements, as alluded to before with exit three, as well as more support from the police and fire department. And that is a cost that is borne by the developer, and that will either be written in to the legislation itself, or in an agreement with the city, where those costs are reimbursed. I talked about the gaming tax rate before, and this is something that I hope stays where it's at. Because in some cases, that gaming tax is much, much higher than 15%. I'm working on a project right now in Illinois, where the rate is 43%. And what happens? Nobody's gonna propose. Casinos aren't gonna get built. They just, they can't afford to actually operate under a tax rate that's that, that's that high. So I applaud the state right now, and I hope they keep it at that level, because I think in the long term, that will be the most beneficial for each of those cities. One, it will give the employer a lot more flexibility with benefits for employees, as well as salaries and wages. More of the money would go back to the actual people and the actual communities, rather than going to the state. So hopefully, we're gonna stay in that range. The other thing that wasn't addressed, as I mentioned before, is a revenue-sharing agreement with the city. And in terms of problem gambling, there is always usually a fund set up, and there's a certain amount of money that is paid in by the operators for that fund. And that has always been a legislative fix in every single state that I've worked with, and that's, that will be part of the final legislation that's done. I think it's also kind of important to not only look at it from the city's perspective, but looking at it from the developer's perspective. And so the things that they're gonna look at is that tax rate by the General Assembly. Capital markets right now depends upon who ultimately the developer is, but things have gone up in the last year, year and a half, by about a percent, in terms of interest rate for, specifically for casinos. So those are, those are gonna be things that are on the mind of the developer. The initial project costs are somewhere in the 520 to $540 million range, and that does not include an entertainment venue. That's just the casino, the food and beverage outlets, as well as the hotel. And any of the infrastructure that needs to be done, all the site work, it's an all-in cost for the development itself. A lot of times, people are looking at a minimum return threshold of 9%, and that's pretty much what they're looking at in terms of cost of capital, if it is more of a limited partnership that's put together by various individuals, as opposed to a major gaming company, where you would see that number go down substantially. And the way people are gonna look at this is as a long-term strategic investment. So they're not necessarily looking at it for, how much money am I gonna make in year one, but more of, what is the value of the property overall? And the one thing that really helps with that is, the legislation right now is written that it's, it's got exclusivity built into it, with only five facilities in the state.
Okay, so that conclusion concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Alan and John. I'm gonna open this up now for questions from city council, and allow me to take the mic to you, while Deborah's gonna do that. We do have copies of the presentation, Deborah says, for anybody that wants to pick it up. Yes, sir, Bill?
Did the, I noticed in the study, I didn't see anything about impact on the surrounding communities. Will that be addressed at any point in time?
Yes, that's a good question. It will, and we're working on that. It's the next component that's being worked on right now.
Also, one other question. How about the, what will happen to the so-called Queens Games that seem to be popping up everywhere, from your 7-Elevens to restaurants and what have you? Will those, will those vanish if a casino opens?
I think that's probably more of a legal regulatory question, because that, I mean, we've taken into account everything that exists in the market, but it's, that's something that I've heard different things, just by reading the newspapers, that some of it's considered, whether it's illegal, whether it's legal, whether, how much more will it go? So I, I'm not sure that, where it's going.
Are there any figures to give a best guess estimate on the revenue that's generated by those types of machines?
We did see some numbers that were reported, but those numbers were handled. And so those numbers are how much money is coming into the machines. It's not how much that is actual revenue, because the machines have to pay out prizes and winnings. So that number, those numbers weren't, we didn't see any numbers on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Will this study be aligned with one that is being done by the Virginia General Assembly, or is this the same report, or are there any similarities or differences?
So our understanding is J-Larke has its own consultant, that they retain to do analysis, but they should be largely doing the same sort of analysis that we've been doing. So I, my understanding is our work is gonna be presented to them for consideration in the work that they're doing, not the consultant, but the legislative body.
Right. And after we get to a point where there's a referendum and we're able to proceed, will there be an opportunity for us to come back and see another study to see how these numbers vary after it's done?
Sure, absolutely. And in a lot of these cases, like the John's work before, the things evolve and things develop over time, and so an update to analysis is probably reasonable to consider that would, might need to be done. So we're open to doing that.
Right, thank you.
Good morning, thank you. When you all were at, in Richmond a few weeks ago, for the J-Larke Commission, I assume that there were other folks like you representing each of the other cities?
Not at the meeting we were at. We understand that may be the case, but it's not where we were there. It was just the Portsmouth contingency.
And the other cities were not?
I think it was a private meeting that was arranged separately. So they may have had their own separate meetings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys, for coming. Couple of things. Great presentation. Assuming, you know, all of this goes correctly, based on you all's experience, I mean, does this happen the way that, that you have seen in your experience? All of the things, the regulatory things, everything lines up. Assuming that all that happens, does this all line up the way that you propose it to?
It usually does. I mean, they, they go through a little reiterative process along the way, but the good part about being towards the tail end is, you can learn by other people's mistakes. And I know when we talked to the Lottery Commission, for instance, who would be overseeing things from a regulatory standpoint, they were very interested to know, what state should we look at, who's the best model to use? So I, I do think that there's gonna be a robust sense of due diligence from all the agencies involved.
And the last question. If all of those things with the J-Larke study, and also the referendum, all those things have to happen for this to happen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you do any work for the gaming industry itself? Any consultant work?
Yes. And that's true for both of us, but we, like I said before, we've worked on all sides of the different gaming issues, both on the government side, on operator's side. It, for us, it's, it's a well-balanced perspective that we're trying to bring. And it's kind of something for, for just the way that I, that we do studies, is that we're trying to provide information for decision-makers to make the best decisions possible. And so the goal is not to provide anything that's gonna lean one way or the other, it's trying to get the best outcome for the city. And so that's kind of how we presented it. And that's why we gave you some of the developer perspective and things too, for you guys to consider those things, because that's, that's what you want to do, is try and create the best relationship to get the best outcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
I, I noticed in reading your bio, a lot of the gaming issues that you guys have dealt with centered around Native American organizations, right? And so, in a lot of different areas and locations in the United States. Based on your understanding, would it be most advantageous for a city like Portsmouth, if we're entering the game of casino life? Would it be advantageous to partner with a Native American organization, or not?
That's definitely a possibility. So, to address your first question, yes, we have worked with a number of tribes, or I've worked for the federal government on tribal issues, so, but I think the balance over time has been commercial and tribal equally, or it's been more commercial over time. I started doing tribal work, so that's where I kinda started at. But, but yes, there are definitely opportunities to work with Native American tribes. There are, there are lots of tribal facilities in the country that are small, they're medium-sized, they provide jobs for their tribes, they're in more rural areas. That's one of the nature of a lot of tribes, is they are in very small rural areas. But there are some tribes that have built significant casinos at the level of, at the highest levels of commercial casinos, and that are, have funding to be able to fund large casino projects. So, that's definitely one type of developer that you probably should consider.
I have, oh, Paul, go ahead.
So, we're putting a positive spin on the development of this project to coerce the General Assembly into approving such.
What we were trying to do is try and provide an objective study, that hopefully presents the realities of what we think is possible, given the assumptions, given the data, given the market that we're talking about. I think the objective of the city is to try and help to move the project along, but that's not been our goal. Our goal is to try and provide an objective, unbiased analysis that's gonna help you guys make the right decision. We don't see it as a thing to try and help you to make the wrong decision by giving you something that's gonna say something that's not true. So, that's not, that's not what we do, so.
But that's not what I'm saying either.
I understand.
In your analysis, can you give an estimate on the number of jobs that this development might bring?
So, that goes, that goes back to the question that the other gentleman over here asked. So, that's something that we're working on right now, so that's forthcoming.
I, I just wanna be clear that I heard you correctly. This proposal, just in its concept, doesn't include an entertainment venue.
The casino in the hotel would be the anchor of an entertainment district. It's the first step.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions from council? Bill?
Do you see, given the closeness of the proposed Norfolk casino with ours, do you see any commonality, reference, joint marketing efforts? And are you aware of a similar, two cities having competing casinos?
I think it's really gonna boil down to who ultimately is the operator for, for both cities. I mean, I think it's, it's too soon to tell. There are jurisdictions where, you know, for instance, in Joliet, Illinois, you have Hollywood Casinos, which is Penn National, and Harrah's, which is Caesars, and they coexist in a peaceful world.
Thanks.
I have another question. In your presentation, there was a acronym, or three letters, VLT, I think was the, what does that stand for?
So, VLT stands for Video Lottery Terminal. So, it's a, it's a gaming device, it's a type of gaming device that's based more on a lottery concept.
Other questions from City Council? Thank you. Dr. Patton or Solomon, would you like to make any concluding comments? And again, this is our study, this is not the state's study, and it's an attempt to be objective, to find out the facts about gaming and the potential of gaming in Portsmouth.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I just wanted to reiterate for the benefit of council and the community at large, this opportunity was presented, and these folks have been presented through efforts to get the best folks involved from a city standpoint, to provide the most solid information, so that Portsmouth does not step into a situation without the best information, the best team, the best individuals to guide us through this particular process. As you all are aware, our representatives have been in this discussion for more than 20 years. We have, as a council, has put out resolutions for the last four or five years in support of gaming. The objective of the administration and staff is to make sure we put out the best information to guide this process through, such that the legacy of this project, if it comes to fruition, is one that will hold its own for the benefit of the entire locality. Mr. Repa and Mr. Meister do have a flight, they're on West Coast time, and so, they're gonna be leaving shortly, but we will be hanging out for just a little bit afterwards, so that you all can meet them and shake their hand, and we'll pick up the discussion in a later time period as this process moves forward.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as you know, this is a public work session, although we are holding it here in the council chamber, and we will follow the protocol as designed for a public work session, and the questions that are coming have come from you. But as Mr. Ashby said, consultants will stay around just for a small minute to answer any questions, but they must get on a flight. That's why we had this at 10 o'clock.
Thank you. We've been at this for an hour, and I wanna thank my colleagues on council for coming. Let me sum it up this way. The legislative side of the matter. In the 2019 session, the General Assembly passed a casino bill with a couple of requirements. One is that J-Lark would do a study and give that study back to the General Assembly by December 1. So, J-Lark is doing its own study, it's on a fast track. That study will be completed, so that the General Assembly will have the best practices report by the 1st of December. The second clause is that the, the legislation has to be reenacted in the 2020 session of the General Assembly that starts in January. This will allow the General Assembly to take the results of the J-Lark study and do any tweaking to the bill that they passed in 2019. There's still a requirement for a referendum. A referendum cannot take place until after the reenactment of the legislation. As you know, bills in the General Assembly, unless they have an emergency clause, do not become effective until July 1 of the year that they're adopted. So, I think it's probably not gonna be emergency legislation, so we're looking at, if this bill is tweaked and reenacted, it becomes effective July 1, 2020. If there's a requirement still for a referendum, which we, most people think there will be, that puts the referendum taking place sometime after July 1, 2020. So, there's still a lot of work to be done. As John indicated, the state's gotta decide how it's gonna regulate casinos, how much tax they're gonna impose on the casinos. While they're not local governments, the five jurisdictions that are in the bill get to decide on who's the operator. Right now, that has not been reserved to the state, but that could be reserved to the state. So, to my colleagues, kudos to you for following this legislation and staying on top of it. With that, no further questions from council? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.